Are present and give your members when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Curtis, hi Kelly. Rachel.
Hi.
Yeah, there, oh Caroline, so is here. There are no members of town staff today, anticipated speakers on the agenda, basically the folks from the Collins group, so Anthony. I can hear you. You're here and Mel.
Here.
Are we expecting Patricia today, Anthony?
No, Patricia will not be at the meeting.
Okay, okay. Good afternoon, this open, this open meeting of the Town Council Study Committee is being conducted remotely or actually in a hybrid fashion pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will allow public questions and comment. For this meeting, the Town Castle Study Committee is convening, convening, convening in person and via Zoom as posted on the town's website, which does identify how the public may join via Zoom. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating by video, that all attendees, some attendees, sorry, are participating by video. Conference accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. If you are participating via Zoom, anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. I'm gonna stop there because I think. I don't want to hear myself talk anymore. So good afternoon, everybody. Full meeting order, can I have a motion to which I presume you've all seen the agenda, can I have a motion to accept the agenda, please? Going around Curtis, Kelly, Rachel.
Hi.
Yep, hi, so Caroline, so hi. A question, did anybody take minutes from these, what was it, August, I forget, twenty something?
It's gonna be taken off the screen by somebody who is so good at it.
Uh, we just, just, just as a, you know, I, I know that Bo and Kelly and Curtis and I have all done minutes.
I can take that one.
Well, I'm, what I was actually about to say, I think we've gotten sort of out of sync, I'm not sure which ones have been approved and which ones haven't been approved. Um, over the last, say, two or three meetings.
Most of them were, except one.
I guess, alright, well. So, what you do today, okay, um, and then in the interim between this meeting and next meeting. Let's write some emails and I, I will go, I will check both the town website as well as my files and next meeting, well, if there are ones that are left unapproved, let's try to wrap that up and bring them up to date, okay. Okay, uh, that was number one, just in terms of other administrivia here, um, we're gonna, the last item um, in terms of discussion, uh, I'm a Roman numeral five, is to discuss the public forum, and I do have some dates from, um, I can't think of her name now, Robin. I think Robin Dugan sent me some dates when the public safety facility here, and it's available, so we can talk about that at the end. Um, I just, I wanted you all to know that I'm meeting with Libby tomorrow at about eleven fifteen, just sort of to catch up, to see where she's been and where, let her know where we are. Um, and I'm supposed to give an update to the select board on Wednesday, the eighteenth, which would be our next two weeks from today. I think that's all they, just sort of administrivia, I wanted to share with the, anybody else have any issues, uh, or items not on the agenda? No, okay. Anthony, can I turn it over to you, are we, we ready to kind of dive back into discussion?
Yeah, yeah, yes, we're good to go. So, uh, first, let me, uh, just give the roadmap, uh, first, what we intend to discuss, you know, if the, if the committee's willing um, to take somewhat of a different approach today, so, uh, one of the things we did in intervening time is we, uh, put together all of the, um, um, sections that the board has sort of formed a consensus around, um, as well as, uh, put together, uh, all of the uh, what we consider sort of, um, more wrote portions of the, um, of the charter, so I want to spend a little bit of time at the beginning, just sort of going through that document that we sent to you. Um, then I'm gonna turn it over to Mel, um, to spend a little bit more time talking about, um, appointed versus elected and how, um, committees shouldn't sort of weigh that, and then we're gonna jump back into finishing up uh, or hopefully finishing up, uh, article four. Um, so with that, I'm gonna share my screen. And I know you, everyone had received this earlier today, um, but this is sort of kind of where we are, um, in terms of where the, what the committee has sort of made some, um, sort of tested decisions on in terms of what it wants to have in the charter. Um, as the document states, the red sections are not sections that the committee has formally voted on or considered, but these are sections that we consider, uh, to be fairly standard across charters, now that doesn't mean that you can't tweak them, you, you definitely can, uh, but these are, you know, they're generally, they generally stay the same from charter to charter. So I'm not gonna sort of go through these sections, um, and then the sections in black are, uh, places where the committee has sort of already formed the sort of consensus on that we've recorded, and part of the reason that we put this together, um, was that this may help, um, as you plan your, um, uh, your public meeting session, um, to having the public have something to talk about, um, um, and pride comment for. There are some, you'll see some sort of highlighted portions in here that, again, for the most part, the committee has had, um, consensus on, but there may be some, um, areas, um, that aren't fully fleshed out, so here, again, this is the section that we've worked on. At the last meeting that we're gonna work on again today, I'm not gonna get into it right now, but you see, we have highlighted here the current, uh, group of, uh, bodies that, uh, will be, will remain, uh, elected, um, for the next, um, in the next, uh, charter. Uh, and then some other, I won't go through all of them right now, but then some highlighted portions around composition of the housing, of the, and some other, some other bodies, and then again, importantly for the committee and for your discussions with the public, um, we sort of highlighted sections that we don't feel comfortable filling in on your behalf, um, but sort of where you're gonna go next, so article five will be next, it's gonna include some, uh, appointed positions. Elections and financial and fiscal procedures can be relatively, uh, wrote from charter to charter, um, but people may have thoughts here, and I, there was a lot of discussion early on um, with this committee about, um, uh, mechanisms to, uh, allow for a, um, a high level of, uh, civic engagement, or, uh, having citizens allowed, um, to bring things before the council and to initiate things on their own, um, and then uh, I'm gonna spend, uh, the general provisions also, that's just covering sort of, um, well, you can see here, things like, you know, when are we gonna do a charter review, um, how do you reference things in the charter, things of that nature? Um, but more importantly, we filled in, uh, is article ten the transition provisions, um, so we filled in again, what we think are sort of the most, um, similar across charters here for this section, but this is an important section, and what, and, and even though some of it's in red here, there's a lot of it that um, this committee's gonna decide, and in terms of, I think the, the one that sort of jumps out the most in terms of transition, uh, as you move from a town council, I'm sorry, from a, um, town meeting to a council form of government, um, what is gonna happen with the select board in the transition period, so we didn't fill that in for you, uh, but that, just to give you a taste that that's sort of one of the things that you're heading, uh, one of the directions, one of the places you're heading in. Um, and again, assuming that, that there aren't too many tweaks on some of these other sections, you can see that you've made some pretty good progress in creating a, a charter, and you've really got what I think of sort of five sort of major decision points, uh, coming down the line. Um, so I'll stop there, I'll just open it up to any questions, if there's anything, again, we're trying to go in a sort of, um, linear fashion through each of the articles, but I do wanna sort of leave some space open, if, if there's anything that jumps out to you about either the sections that we put in on your behalf that are sort of wrote, or even the stuff that you've already adopted.
Um, and, sure, um, my only comment, Anthony, is at some point, this is gonna have to go to KP Law because they're gonna wanna review it, um, so do you figure we'll sort of fill in what we have here and then put a draft together, they'll go to them for further review?
I, I think one of our thoughts, and part of the reason that we put it together like this, was so that you could send this to KP Law and to send them, as you, as we start filling in other articles, you can send it to them periodically, that way they're not perhaps inundated with the whole thing at one time, and you can sort of get them started on it. Um, before you do that, though, I guess I would encourage, and I mean, it's the committee, you guys, we don't send to them, the committee would say, you know, we'd like to send this to KP Law, I would sort of encourage you to look closely at the red portions and then maybe say whether it's a notation, and we'll update our records to say, we, we don't think that we'll move forward this section, we might modify it, but I mean, generally, the sections in red um, I would say are virtually the same across charters across the state, but again, that's, that's your decision, um, on the committee.
Well, ju- just to, just sort of jump into your curse, I, I was actually thinking, Anthony, since I have, I'm meeting with Libby tomorrow, taking us along, and, cause I, I don't really know whether, you know, she's gonna say, great, I'll, I'll pass it along to John Giorgio, or whether she says, you know, I don't wanna do it now, or do it, I don't know, but, um, I thought it might be a good, you know, sort of show and tell piece to bring along to my meeting with her, and just say, you know, kinda, here's, here's where we are, it's, it's a work in progress, there are, you know, some sections that still need and committee needs to kind of come to a more of a consensus, but we're, you know, we're moving along.
I think that's a great idea.
Anybody? Everybody, okay, well, that, that's.
Could we, could we add that we would like KP Law to look at it now?
Oh, yeah, no, I, I, I think, and I, I sort of agree with Curtis's issue here, or concern here is we don't wanna dump them, you know, wait till it's all finished and then dump it on them in December, and all of a sudden, they've got, you know.
Six weeks of work to do.
Yeah, I think, I think better to get, let them take a look, and, um, I, I don't know, I don't know whether they're gonna, you know, rewrite it, or whether they're gonna just say, hey, what a great, you know, what a great first draft.
They're gonna say, great job.
Alright. Okay, I'll bring that along.
And, um, we're gonna keep, um, we, we keep a running, um, sort of document, but we can periodically send you again, where the consensus is at, so this will be sort of part of our ongoing meetings, that will, you guys will get sort of the whole document in its future versions. Um, with that, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Mel, um, we sort of left off, um, going through elected and appointed positions, particularly looking at some, uh, appointed, uh, I'm sorry, some elected boards at the last meeting. Uh, one of the areas that we did talk about was removing the, um, shellfish advisory board. Before we, but before we jump back into article four, we did want to do a, a overview about just how we think about these positions and making them elected versus appointed. So Mel, I'm gonna turn it over to you, do you want me to do the, to bring up the chart first, or the, um, what you've got on their existing charter?
Why don't you just, uh, take this one off, and I'll just speak for a little while, and I'll, I'll ask you to post certain things. Um, good afternoon, everybody, um, I thought the meeting, last, last meeting was really, really good, because, uh, you know, there, this is really the meat and potatoes of a lot of the uh, charter discussions that communities have, is who's elected, who's appointed, you know, where are the power bases in the community, how are decisions made? This is the, this is really the crux of a lot of, um, you know, discussions of the charter, and I, and I thought there was very good discussions last, last meeting. Uh, we, as a team at Collins Center, met and, you know, um, suggested a few, few things, uh, as a follow-up to that meeting, and as you're going to continue that discussion today, so first, on the elected side, um, there is a chart that we, um, we provided, and Anthony, uh, could you just post the chart, I, I don't wanna keep it up, because I really don't wanna talk about it in detail, but I just want committee members to see the chart that compares, uh, a number of, uh, council manager communities, and how they handle their elected versus appointed, um, positions, so it's this little matrix, and, um, you know, we try to explain, uh, those communities that are town, the council manager forms, you know, how much of the boards get appointed by, uh, how many are elected, first of all, and then, uh, those that are appointed, who appoints them? The council, or the manager, or combination of the two, what have you, so, uh, we can take that off now, but I did wanna point out, uh, just generally, that, um, uh, the discussion that we had last week about elected boards, and as Anthony mentioned, one of which was, uh, preliminarily taken and, and considered for appointment, Shell Fish and Harbor Advisory Committee, but in general, um, if the elected boards that you currently have will continue in the council manager, you would be really on the edge of the higher end of that chart. Uh, it's rare that i- in a council manager form, that the, uh, the legislative body, the council, would, uh, assume so much of that executive appointment authority. Having said that, I will say that, you know, this is, uh, the most, um, local issue, the most political issue that, that can happen, and in many cases, a charter change could, um, succeed or fail based on those decisions, so we're not gonna put ourselves in your place.
Mel, hang on a second, sorry, we're, we're having a little mechanical problem here. Sorry, one, one of the air, the air conditioner in the room has gotten unusually loud, so hang on a second. I don't know what Bo's gonna do, go pull the, pull the plug or something. We sent our, we sent our contractor out. It's good they both see. Or this could just go to everyone. Uh, it's, uh, one outside. Yeah, the breaker there.
Just so you know, it's not coming across our way, we don't, we don't hear it.
Well, that, that's good, because it's pretty loud in here.
We can't hear you.
I don't, yeah, I can't tell whether it's this machine or the, the big one outside, oh. It's the big one. The big one, right? Alright, well, you got one, three, yeah, one, three thing in the charter. You, you can't, you, I don't know, it wasn't coming through, it was really loud in here.
Like, the whole building was shaking.
The dust star noise.
But it's over now.
Alright, so, sorry Mel, sorry for the interruption, and, um, anyway.
No, that's, that's fine, um, so, just to summary, for, on the elected side, uh, we point, we, our observation is that, uh, the number of elected boards and committees that uh, at least preliminarily, the committee is considering retaining, is, would be on the higher side, uh, not really on the highest side of, of our chart that compares other communities, having said that, we understand that this is the most political issue that, that a committee can encounter, or a town can encounter when it, um, tries to change its charter, and so, you know, we, we don't put ourselves in your place to make those judgments, but just to point out uh, that that's, that's on the high side, um, we would just suggest that you look at our matrix again, uh, you know, take a look at what other communities, how they work uh, in terms of elected versus appointed, and also, I think, uh, what I noticed in your existing charter, under, um, section four point four, um, there are a number of, uh, bodies that have been, at least their staff, I should say, has, has been designated as town administration departments, now that doesn't mean that they, their board is, doesn't remain elected, but there is a precedent of having, um, um, a, a number of boards, this last paragraph there, uh, their staff, um, uh, you know, considered as, as, uh, town administration department, so I think between the, uh, matrix and the, um, and, and this precedent, perhaps, uh, it would give you some additional thoughts on that. Um, uh, so that's, that's that, now, uh, uh, moving to appointed. Um, on the appointed side, uh, we heard some on the committee who, uh, had a reluctance to cede a point, appointment authority, this is for boards and committees to one individual, the town manager, who is an appointed, uh, officer of the town, as you know. Uh, others saw that there were more logical transitions from appointment from the select board, who was an elected board, to the to the, uh, elected town council, others pointed out that the town council is not an executive, it's, it's a legislative body, they are elected, but they are, are the legislative body, and then, of course, um, in the council manager form of government, the executive function is, um, transferred to a single individual, the town manager. Um, so it's not as simple, uh, you know, in practice, moving from a council manager form of government, especially in the town of town meeting forum, going from, from the town meeting forum, just not a simple transfer of, uh, one board to another. In, in the case of a council manager form, the council is, is the legislative body, no longer the executive body, however, they do retain some executive-like functions. Uh, they, they appoint and, um, remove the town manager, in that role, the council adopts, uh, priorities and goals with the town manager, evaluates her performance, and then also, as the town's chief elected body, uh, they, they are expected that they will adopt, um, town, town-wide policy. So they're not, not just a legislative body, uh, they do have executive-like functions i- in this form, and so it's not just a simple transfer. Um, however, uh, you know, the whole point of the council manager form is to make it more efficient, or one of the points, is to make it more efficient, and, and we really don't see the legislative body, or a larger body like a county council, really, um, uh, should be, you know, interviewing people and appointing people, rather, uh, we think it's more typical that, um, the town manager be given so, uh, some wide appointing authority, there could be exceptions, of course, in many communities, the town council does appoint uh, officers like the, uh, legal counsel, or the accountants, or even the zoning board of appeals, but for the most part, um, it's, it resides, that appointing authority resides with town manager with a fairly rigorous, uh, confirmation or veto process of the council. So again, I think we, we are, um, suggesting that you look a little harder at that, the, the, one other point is that many charters also open up the process of, of soliciting board and committee members, a very transparent and open process, um, written actually in the charter that ensures that the town manager will, um, you know, really cast a wide net to look for people in the community, and it won't be a closed process, and then combining that with the confirmation authority of the town council uh, tends to be the way, um, you know, many town, uh, town, uh, council, um, forms work. And I will point out that, maybe you can bring up that, um, uh, slide from the existing charter again, Anthony. There is a provision in the current charter that does allow the, a select board to delegate appointment authority to the town manager under certain circumstances, and I believe we heard that, in fact, uh, that has been done, I think, in four cases, so if you look at four point three, town manager shall appoint members of town boards committees, uh, but only to the extent that that power, uh, i- is delegated by the select board, and then subject to resolution or disapproval. So, uh, I think we have some precedent of that in the current charter, and would encourage you to consider that as you move forward and consider what other, how other boards and committees will be appointed, thank you.
Question. Um, Curtis, I, aren't essentially all appointments subject to ratification, as I look at this, you know, subject to ratification, subject to approval? So I, I like the idea of the town manager appointing, but if there's a question or a problem, the, um, council could ask to ratify, or that should be built in, maybe.
We recommend that, yes.
Uh, Mel or, or Anthony, to preliminary, or, or, I guess preliminary questions, number one, are there particular offices that are required to be elected? Um, and maybe you've already, you talked about this last week, but are any, are there any offices within a, any town, um, the planning board, I don't know, that, you know, that, uh, that are required to be, uh, elected positions, a town clerk, you know? Or are they all sort of optional, and you could, however you set up your charter, they can be appointed positions or elected positions?
Well, I, I think the school committee is one of those, um, uh, although there isn't a point to school committee in Boston, but I think it's a very rare, so I, I would say it's school committee, but the concept of home rule really gives you the authority to determine how your, uh, your officers and, and boards and committees will be, will be selected.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so number, number one, the school committee is, is presumably then the only one that is absolutely by practice or by legislation required to be an elected group of people, uh, everything, everything else you could make an appointed uh, depending on whether you thought it would pass the vote, but I mean.
It's the only one that's told in every part of the charter.
Is, is the trend among towns that have either converted, whatever direction they went in, is that, is the trend towards reducing the amount of elected commissions and boards, um, is it, is that something if we can point to, or, or is it a fact?
So, I, I mean, I would point to the chart, um, that we provided, I, I don't know if I would say it's a trend, I'm just pulling it up, um, but there is, um, Mel, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's a trend towards efficiency, uh, or, or, um, so, there, there's a trend to, so if you, if you look at, as Mel said, there are fewer communities with a large, a significant number of elected boards. Do you understand, more communities have fewer elected boards than others?
So, so it, it does appear to be, whether it's a trend or not, it, 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 it's a reality that um, I'm, I don't know, that, you know, that, that elected boards and commissions seem to be, I don't know, fewer than, than in the past, I guess, I don't know, but, Caroline, Eric.
Uh, I thought he was remembering that last meeting, Pat said there was a trend towards away from elective, and so, does anyone else remember that, uh, to increase efficiency? Trying to find my notes.
Well, I, I would agree with her, and I think the problem is, we just can't really point to empirical statistics that, you know, could could prove that, but i- in our observation, and, you know, we, we, we work in a lot of communities that do charters, it's rare that a committee won't also, at the same time, considering all this, uh, they, it's, it's typical that they will consider uh, re- reducing the number of elected boards generally, and the independence of those boards, and making, uh, making purely advisory boards probably more often than not by, uh, appointed.
Thanks, I mean, I just think among us, the, the, the issue that this sort of raises for me is when we finally get around to, you know, having this structured as an article and looking for a vote at town meeting, you know, I think I've always, always said, and many of us, I think, agree that the fewer changes we make, sort of from the, either the appearance or the structure of open town meeting to town council, should, I would think, would um, improve the odds of getting a positive vote, so if, if we made lots and lots of changes, I would think people would be more, you know.
They'd be asking item by item.
Well, we'd be arguing all sorts of points that, you know, in the first, if you wanna look at this sort of the first go-around, um, you know, if we can make this a similar to the current structure as makes sense, I would just think that would be a more popular or more palatable change.
Um, I, I think that we might wanna be considering that if we use that tagline, or if we, or if we try to sell it that way, that then we're missing the opportunity of actually explaining how this is a different paradigm, it is a paradigm shift, actually, because of the legislative, we can't translate the legislative from, uh, it, it isn't a direct translation, and so I think it would be good for us to decide now, um, if we should try to push this as a brand new thing that has its own selling point, or if we should, from a PRing, advertising standpoint, think of this as being something that can actually be mapped over so that it's palatable, I think we should all try to decide on that.
Comments? Yeah, um, I understand what you're saying, and it occurs to me, if we do roll over the existing. I understand what you're saying, and it occurs to me if we do roll over the existing further study, the town council could then make changes that were appropriate and necessary.
I mean, it it seems to me this can can be modified or will evolve over time as as any town gets used to operating in this way.
That's what I'm getting at.
Got a question?
Thank you. Suzanne Girardi, I just wanted clarification on there are other forms of government that maintain separate executive versus legislative bodies? This is a huge shift in my mind that we moved from town meeting, that is the legislative and select board, that's the executive with the town manager, shifting, from what I'm understanding, maybe I'm missing something. Shifting power, executive and legislative to one body is what moving through the town council sounds like to me. Is that correct?
Not really. The executive is the town manager.
Well, so by American government government standards, you have to have separation powers between legislative and executive bodies, just like Congress, right? So what we're doing is separating the legislative, which would be town council, and the executive, which would be town manager. So you have two institutions that are enshrined in this system.
That the town ma- It sounded like earlier you were saying that the town manager is appointed by the council?
Yes, just the same way.
Not elected, but becomes.
Yeah, so an electorate would be a mayor. By the, you know, popular, be mayor.
And that would keep it really separate.
You're correct. And there are and there there are town, you know, mayor, city council, or town town council, you know, communities in Boston, being the biggest. Uh and I just think that in our conversations, we felt that going all the way to to a mayor, city council form would be sort of more more political than Nantucket might be interested in dealing with. But this was kind of a better interim step. But the goal has always been a more efficient way of having a town run politically than open town meeting.
Thank you.
So um. Alright, so the boards that we had left, so Concom, CBA. HTC. No, HTC's aren't taken care of. Plans are taken care of.
Aren't there elected members of the plan before?
Yeah. We have it as elected here. Uh land-based, elected, planning board, elected, board committee, elected. Southford, elected, HTC, elected. And that's all, that's not changing anything that's just in my current charter. Uh water commissioners.
Yeah, so from the last meeting, you basically kept all of the current elected positions elected, with two exceptions, the moderator, which would no longer exist under the next form, and the shellfish advisory board.
Yes, and shellfish advisory board. So we really only have like three or four, unless I'm leaving leaving one out. Boards say we have to decide whether they need to be elected or appointed.
Is school committee on that?
Yes, yeah, it's in here. Okay, so something like the Concom. And I think this is the example that I used last time, because we got hung up on the Concom. In my view, and this is where Jeff and I, but Jeff will be the expert. In my view, is a regulatory board, because it acts in a regulatory way. Right? So in a regulatory way, that's that is a function of the executive. Here's the legislation. And then the board figures out how to regulate with the legislation. Right? So then that's an appointed by the executive thing. Okay, and that's kind of the way that they had it set up for a lot of these boards. That the town manager should appoint their own regulatory boards. Okay, and I see Concom as being one of those where it would go to an appointment by the town manager.
I have no problem. How about planning?
Okay, planning. Is that a, is that more of a legislative, because we're proposing legislature, legislator, legislature? That we're proposing legislature. Okay, and is that something that would be legislative or executive?
Well, I'm still looking at the state thing that we have intruding in that process.
Can I have, I don't want to interrupt with those, I'm going to complete a stop, but I think this is what I I was trying to say last week is, I I look at committees and in kind of a what silo they did in, and we were just kind of touching on it, is I think there's a group of of boards and committees that can create their own regulations. They can create their own legislation. Concom can adopt their own regulations to interpret the bylaw that's imposed. So they can adopt those. Planning, CBA, HTC, Board of Health, they can all create legislation. To me, in my head, I think those should all be, personally should be elected because they can create legislation. Anyone that is not, I think if you're an advisory board, you should be appointed by the town manager, subject to some level of ratification by the council, because I think that creates kind of a check and balance on that appointment process. So you, something can't get welcome. Right now, we're appointed by the, appointed boards are appointed by the select board with no there's no check. It just is what it is. The board votes. You're on or not, there's no secondary ratification step. I know that's a bit of a change, but at the same time, right, this is the one section, I think, in the charter almost more than any other, where that power rests with the executive right now, and that executive is radically changing from a board of five to one to a single person, and you need to create that that check and balance between those two.
I agree with check and balance. Think of it this way. You're the legislature town council, and you're saying, okay, we want you, we created this bylaw, we want you to regulate. Okay? Then you say, okay, you, town manager, regulate. So town manager would have to go to the boards and be like, hey, we have to come up with a regulation around this bylaw. Okay, now, if the board was selected by the legislature, the town manager might come back and say, hey, you gave me these people. Okay, I, these aren't my people that I wanted to work on this, this regulates, this regulation. Okay, and therefore, I, you know, I, whatever excuse they can throw at you, they're going to throw at you. So you kind of want to give them their own people to to work on this project, in other words, and the best way to view it is just like that, because then in the new system, you're going to have the separation of these two institutions. And you're going to want the legislature to put pressure on the executive to enforce the bylaws. Okay, and there's going to be a lot of back and forth, and there's going to be a lot of challenging. Okay, but that's the way the sh- the system should work. That these that these two boards are going to have to, or these two institutions are going to have to kind of battle with each other so that this system works. But you have to kind of separate it and say, okay, you're going to select your board, you're going to select your board. That make sense?
Who ratifies these selections?
So you're, so you're
Town council ratifies.
So Bo, you're you're arguing that the town manager should have authority to appoint all these boards, leaving aside the elected ones. And any of these appointed boards, the town manager is going to have the authority to recruit, interview, and then populate these boards with the with the the town council having the you know, veto power, veto power if we don't like.
Ratification power, but I'm bringing with you that those are buckets, those are two buckets. There's a legislative bucket, there's an executive bucket. The regulatory stuff goes in the executive bucket, and the legislative goes in the executive legislative bucket.
But you're, but Jeff, I thought I heard your 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 thing about regulatory being, those are the, those are the boards or commissions that get elected.
No, so I I did, and then listening to Bo again, Bo was right, right? Like the town council can say to kind of really step it back, and I'll just stay with 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 Concom, because I think that's the one I understand the best is the legislator adopts the bylaw, right? So the town local weapons bylaws adopted by the legislative branch, right? And in all of these bylaws, or most of them, have the sentence that's in there that says the conservation commission or the HTC shall be able to promulgate regulations to enact the enforcement of this bylaw. So they're not truly creating legislation, they're creating the executive function of that bylaw.
Well, regulations.
Right.
Like like any government a- agency, or what is, they're creating regulations that govern how the law, in our case, the bylaw gets applied or or is enforced on the town of Nantucket.
So I I think the way Bo explained it is absolutely correct, where those then, since it's not pure legislation, make more sense with executive appointing authority, kind of similar to like when we look at the chart. Kind of similar to what we see with Southbridge. Uh and I apologize to Southbridge by seven, where they have them all. But I I I think that that
To confirmation.
Correct. I think the important part is that confirmation portion, that way there is a check. So that way, if the town manager reviews all the applications and the council says, well, we don't feel like you are putting the right group of people together, we'll bring this new slate of people, try again.
I have a question. HTC, we've gone through the HTC stuff where uh appeals have gone to the select board. How would that work in this system?
Yeah.
I guess that the town council would have to be alternate.
So the appeal would go back to the town council like it does in Smay.
Yeah.
I, I mean, they end up being the tip of the pyramid, don't they? They sort of end up being the peak of the pyramid. I mean.
Yeah, but now the select board is is deciding which is executive. And um the town council will be legislative. It's fine. I'm just thinking that's one of those points that we keep getting. Anthony, are you listening to all this? You getting the byplay?
Yes.
Comment on that.
What what committee are you referring to?
Historic, historic commission?
Yeah.
And 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 where where is this body of of law that you're referring to that gives the select board some appeal? Is it in the bylaw?
That, no, that's in the, that's in the special act creating the HTC.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, our our goal is to keep these major bodies and institutions created by special act and just deal with them in the transition section and adapt them to 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 make it work as consistently as possible in the new form of government.
So then, in the ca- in this example, if there's an HTC appeal, the the town council ends up being kind of the adjudicator superior to the HTC itself there. Um and that's just sort of a special function that the town council has. Because they're kind of the, because they're sort of the senior, most elected officials and on their talking.
We'd have to look at specifically the 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 law you're referring to, but
Well, well.
Generally, yes.
Yeah, if, so the um if you look at the the language that that we just sent over to you, or the full draft charter, which has the sort of proposed language for for um, for language three. So the HTC, for certain, several of your current elected boards were created through special acts. So that's actually the same path that your charter is going to take up to it's, you know, voted on town meeting and then sent up to the legislature to be adopted, uh you know, hopefully, and then enacted. So for those particular committees, what we did in the in this draft charter is, we basically said that we're going to continue those, those special acts will continue in force. Um and we, the charter memorialized in the in the um in the elected official position, basically, the number of individuals in the board um and how they are elected in their terms. So in many ways, the copy and paste of what's in this, the um this, the the special act, particularly if you're looking at the HTC subsection C, the historic district, she'll have all the powers and authorities and perform all the duties here and after enumerated in chapter three ninety-five of the Acts of nineteen seventy. With the one change in the charter language, um and we highlighted and read, um that the confirmations that the town manager, which again, being the executive under the under the town council form, it had previously said the, I think, the town, I already know that the select board, it would be the town manager with the confirmation of the town council, which is just something we put in based on the conversation at your last meeting. I mean, then as as and I, and I'm trying to be concise possible, then as Mel said, in the transition provisions, we would include provisions that say, to the extent that any special acts, you know, confer any power over to the select board, those should be exercised by the town council pending um some new revised special act language, something like that.
Okay.
We're going there.
So, all right, so in terms of where we are in terms of appointed and I guess, and I wasn't here the last for the last meeting, so do we have kind of the list of boards and commissions that are elected, but and 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 boards and commissions that are going to be appointed?
Sorry, we do not have Board of Health, ZBA.
And then, but I think we're trying to go all of those being appointed.
Yeah, but we need to, we need to crack.
Somebody needs to make the list.
Well, well, just, uh uh so so one clarification. And and I apologize, we tried to make this clear. You, we don't advise, I mean, you could, but we don't advise you to put every conceivable board and committee in the charter. Um, you know, they change over time. The the important ones, and why we spend so much time in them, are the elected boards, and we did compile for you all the boards that are currently elected. Um and then some boards, so for example, again, and it's it's a little, I'll say it's it's not strange, I mean, this is the way we usually do it, but it can be confusing because we save a lot of language for the transition provisions. So I think the SHAB is a good example. It's one that if it had stayed elected, would be in the charter, but it might be better as an unelected appointed board to be in a bylaw um in the near future. So that so we would, if if the committee goes in that direction, we would craft transition uh section language that says you know, the current members will stay in their positions, um but as of some date, the new town council will adopt a bylaw ordinance, um creating them in the towns, uh in the town code, uh something like that. So so I'm just, I'm laying that out there to say, don't expect to have, or I guess we wouldn't, we wouldn't advise you to try to put all of the various boards and committees in the charter. That we we we, I think we would suggest that that's not the most efficient way for you guys to go about this process.
Elected boards, elected boards, yes, but not all appointed boards.
And and then the elected boards are the ones here on page nine, under section four point one, the school committee, the town clerk, HTC, those are, those are the elect, current elected submissions or boards, some of them set, established by special acts. Some of them just his- historically, I suppose, the way that the way it is. And then some of these other sounds like what the the shellfish board and we're we're comfortable with moving that to being appointed. Yeah, I mean, which I agree with. I I think if we have the opportunity to move things to appointed. You know, basically, makes thing, I think it makes the importation and puts them under under the control of the town managers.
I think I think it's just that simple. It's the ones that are listed as elected are the ones that you keep as elected. Anything else appointed with I believe ratification requirement by town council.
Right, and I and I think ratification or disapproval by the town council, but not appointment by the town council. Correct. Appointment by the town manager, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's no problem. I really don't want to create a problem. But as a water commissioner, we have been discussing the idea of a joint water sewer commission. If you know, your water bill has your sewer bill on it. When the sewer department digs up the ground, the water company goes in and puts in pipes at the same time, so we don't rip it up twice. And I don't have an answer to it, and I'm just saying, a, right now, the sewer commissioners are the select board. And who would be the sewer commissioners if we have a town manager and a town council? So I just don't think we can avoid the question of a combined water sewer commission as we move forward.
I'm also, and I don't mean to be a problem. But I have a blanket statement, say.
But I have a blanket statement, say, uh, you know, appointed by town manager. So in the case of like a FinCom, which you're not going to have, but you say, let's say that the that the legislature wants to create its own committee and call it Ways and Means. Okay, because all they're doing is reviewing the budget in the town. So the town gives, or town gives the town council a budget, says we need your approval. Town council creates a committee to look at the budget. That's all.
That's like FinCom, doesn't it?
Just like FinCom.
Yeah.
Okay. If you, if you have a blanket statement in there, it's like, well, uh, the the town manager is going to appoint these people, then basically you've got a conflict of interest. Does the town manager going to appoint the people that's that are reviewing the budget? So so.
I'm not trying entirely by the conflict thing, but okay.
You want to get this stuff through, you know, to pick.
Well, I mean, I I don't, yeah, just.
I'm just saying.
Can't we, can't we just set it up so that?
I think we just leave it. I think we just leave it by law.
It's okay with me. I just want to.
Okay, because I think, I think various executive or legislator, they're going to want to pick their own people. I just leave it all that, well, leave it all that, but yes, have it on the ratification.
I mean, Anthony or Mel, you know, it seems to me that some of these other towns with town councils do have finance committees, maybe they have ways and means committees, maybe they have other committees that sort of deal with certain parts of the budget or the legislative process and are kind of there at the um request or the desire of the town councilers themselves. Is that is there anything in here that, nothing in here stops, I guess, the town council saying, well, you know, we need a finance committee, town manager go out and put us together, put together a ta- a a finance committee for us, um.
No. I don't want to talk. Where you gonna go? You can take it. Yeah.
That, well, I was just going to say, there's nothing really to stop. You're right. There is nothing to stop the uh, council from appointing, creating its own committees to help them exercise its responsibilities. I personally wouldn't call it a finance committee because finance committee is sort of a defined body under town government, town meeting, former government. I've heard it called other things and, uh, you know, but it would be advisory, um.
Uh, yeah.
Whereas in some cases, the finance committee is independent.
And and I would just add, when we craft the language around um, appointment authority, um, and it sounds like it's going in a direction of sort of seating it with the town manager, there's always a sort of a c- a caveat, caveat or carve out where you say, uh, unless otherwise um described in the charter or the bylaws. Um, so you, the community always has the possibility of saying, we're going to create a committee or board, and we want their appointment to be different than the, basically the default in the charter. And then just on the finance committee piece, one of the reasons why the finance section of the charter is one that we assume that communities want to talk a lot about is some communities do try to retain a committee where they define it inside that, that part of the bylaw, I'm sorry, that part of the charter, um, where they define a committee, um, that retains some of the um uh, some of the advisory um power that Mel was talking about for the, for the finance committee. I forget exactly what we named them off the top of my head. Um, but it's a, it's a diff- it's a, it operates similar to a finance committee, except under this town council form of government, and that would be in the finance section. Um, uh, which is in the um, the sort of outline that you have in front of you.
I think that carve out will be a great idea.
Yeah, I I think at some point, it may not be finances. The let's, the town council may want advice on something else.
Yeah.
Form of work.
Right now, real, a real estate committee, uh, you know, there's all sorts of.
So the council would carve out whatever they need. It could be a a a short-term committee if they needed and.
And I think that the same may go for the executive too. Say, hey, this is an issue. We need to create a committee to study this to recommend something.
Then he would go to the council and ask for approval to do that. Or maybe just do.
He or she would go, whoever the top manager is.
Yeah.
Okay. Could do that, but it would still be subject to some level of.
Well, I hope we're making progress on this, because it's I don't know, it's it's probably the most complex part of our job, frankly.
Well, and some of these things, I think we're, we're going to end up coming back to again, because, I mean, I'm just, I keep thinking the NP and EDC, I don't think we've, anything we've talked about exactly deals with that body, um.
They're county units, so.
Garbouts sound really good to me.
Um, well, another thing that's so tricky, some of these committees also, right, have a lot of representatives from other boards and committees, but again, A and E D C is loaded with, you know, they have playing for Concom, uh, if they're, they're talking about it, some of them from the historical commission, uh, over time, it's been kicked around, right? They have a lot of or CDC is another one where they have a number of members from their boards, so it's kind of a hot topic.
Okay, so it's, it sounds like appointed committees are largely with, and there may be some specific part, part about largely going to be appointed by the town manager with sort of approval or disapproval rights.
So that seems to be.
Kind of, yeah, kind of the way we're going.
Confirmation.
And then there are, and then, and then the elected, the groups that are elected are here are going to be enumerated in the, in the new charter. Um, I don't seems, seems like that's where we're sort of.
Are we doing okay, Anthony?
Yeah.
Are we going to carry over the, um, department head ratification that we kind of have on chart? Is that this perhaps right here? Well, that's what I was looking at.
I'm fine with that. You keep that in. Again, provides a nice. So, so so, uh, department heads would have to be, are appointed by the town manager, but need to be ratified or approved.
Well, if you look one up at Randolph, they have to do it within fifteen days. So it sounds, so if you don't do it by default, the appointment stands. So the Randolph one is even a little different.
So essentially what we give here too. They kind of specifically. I mean, I think I said, I think that certainly makes sense with the sort of senior most town officials, the police chief, the fire chief. That sort of thing.
Although I'd give him maybe twenty-one days. Um, just so they can have a meeting, because sometimes appointment happens in summer and there's no meeting and, yeah.
Well, you've got thirty, forty-five, twenty-one, fourteen, and fifteen in the, in this first page of the chart. Take the number. Thirty days, who cares?
I'll, I'll vote for twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Twenty-one. That's my thing for Wilson.
Twenty-one. All right. So let's get it. Um, Anthony and Mel, did you, you, you've been listening. Have, have we settled on the decisions you think we needed to make about, uh, elected versus appointed position? Enough for you to?
Yeah, I think so. What I, I'm, I'm going to repeat this back and Mel, if you've got different notes, please chime in, but I I've, basically what I'm hearing is seat, um, the default appointment authority for boards and commissions as well as department heads with the town manager, um, with the um, subject to the approval of the um town council, which I have here. And then you want to expand this time period for appointment or rejection from fourteen days to twenty-one days.
Yeah, so far, yeah.
May I add one thing? Uh, right now, we go through these committee appointments hour on hour on hour. The current select board has meets independently as a licensing board to save all that time. So when we get into committee appointments, uh, well, I guess if the town manager does it, we don't have to have all of these hearings, but my God, the time we wa- we take at, at Wednesday's meeting to listen to people, read their stuff is terrible. We got to make it more efficient.
All right.
So let's town manager, go ahead and do.
All right, um, so.
Hey, what's next?
So I will, i- and it's, it's, I hope no one's head explodes, but I just, I'm gonna just sort of go through this, uh, article, article five, uh, I'm sorry, article four, very quickly. Um, to make sure, I just want to highlight some things and make sure that everyone understands and that, and that we understand the will sort of of the, of the body. Um, so, um, and I'm pretty sure, again, we've highlighted, these are the, these are the bodies that will remain elected, which is all but one, I'm sorry, all but two, uh, that are current, that are current bodies, with the exception of the town clerk, which is just a position. Um, we have in here, and this was not in the version that you saw before. Um, again, all the red stuff is sort of what we consider new rote, uh, language, um, voter eligibility, um, which is based heavily on state law. Um, but I think one that communities can sort of wrangle over is vacancies. Um, so um, I I guess I won't read it unless you want me to, but basically it talks about for vacancies shall occur in one of the elected positions identified in this section. So not talking about school, uh, not talking about city coun- not talking about, um, uh, city council. Um, I'm sorry, town council. It talks about how these vacancies shall be filled. Um, I mean, I'll read it if, if it's the will, if it's the will of the body, but, um, I'm curious if you are comfortable with this vacancy, uh, language.
We said on page ten, uh, what language?
Yeah, so if someone leaves one of the elected boards before their term, which literally was happening right now, um, how do we replace that vacancy? This is, I think, if I'm right, Anthony, proposing that the town council have a special meeting.
With the, the board in question?
Correct. To make that determination.
Correct.
Only for elected boards.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Is that consistent with other practice?
Um, I, I would say this varies very widely across the state. Um, we don't actually have a chart. We can put together a chart for you. It it varies significantly, I would say. Um, trying to, um, the, the, I think the only place where this is, I wouldn't say unique, but might be different from most is that it includes the school committee usually, I won't say usually, but there are sometimes school committees are not, these provisions don't include the school committee, but for the other, again, I'm, I'm sorry for rambling a little bit, but I hearken back to the chart, um. Most communities that are going through this process don't have as many elected boards and commissions that that you currently have, so um, usually these vacancy provisions will apply to the vacancy provisions only apply to like, um, city, town council and school committee. So this is relatively à la carte for for the number of boards that are elected that you have in Nantucket.
So basically, what you're proposing is language that for, if if there's a vacancy that occurs on one of the elected boards, the town council pulls a meeting and and appoints a substitute to fill that position until the next election. At the next election, the, the substitute ca- um member of that committee had, can certainly run for that office if they so choose. Um, as I read it here, they, they can't be, they can't be called a candidate for reelection because they were an appointed substitute, so they're in effect, they have to run as a
Independent.
As a new independent candidate for that, that committee seat. Um, and they may lose because somebody else may run and get more votes, so, um, it works, sounds, I mean, it certainly, it certainly seems reasonable to me, so.
I'm okay.
But, yeah. I think you're getting a lot of nods on that one, Anthony.
I'll, I'll move right, oh.
Just curious, I think my head's just struggling to get around the legal jargon, like how is somebody potentially appointed to fill the seat? Like, that's just of all registered voters, the councils, the committee counselors picking somebody, or is it?
Yes, the vacancy beach shall be filled from eligible applicants by a roll call vote of the town council and the remaining members of the board committee or authority, if any.
So it'd be similar to what we do now, where I think if you were interested, you would provide whatever form they ask to fill out to express your interest in the position. They would then take all of the candidates and let you vote on who they thought was the best.
Good.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Tom. Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Tom.
Hey, uh, so Anthony, can you clarify for that? So like, there is going to be a vacancy on the school committee. So if we were in a town council forum, how would, how would that work in this?
Uh, so under, under this language, um, the town council and the remaining members of the school committee would meet, um, and and again, I I'll sort of lay this out, so for the protection of, the protection or the openness for the community, um, that meeting has to be posted at least twenty-one days into being, so that everyone, you know, that there's that must as much opportunity for the community to know about the meeting as possible. Um, for candidates to apply, um, and the people have to be registered voters. Um, and then that, the group meets in sort of under its own rules, but uh, the final vote has to be, um, a majority, at least, you know, fifty-one percent. They will pick one of the candidates, um, to fill the seat for the remainder of the term.
Of a, of a joint vote between the town council and the school committee?
Correct. So fifty-one percent of all the participants in that meeting.
Right, so that differs, so the school committee is going to fill their own vacancy. Um, if we were to suddenly snap our fingers and and we, and select word would do that with them, I would be really hesitant on wanting to do that. I think this is something we should think about, at least for school committee. I I know we talked about it in other things, but, um, I I I had, I mean, I just need to think about this one.
What we can do in the interim, oh, sorry, Mel, Mel, go ahead.
I thought, Tom, that that's the way it happens now under a town form of government. So if you have a, an elected body that has a vacancy, uh, I thought that the remaining members of that body and the select board would get together, and as you pointed out, in some cases, just by sheer number of the remaining members of the other board, they control that, that appointment. But I I thought that's the way it currently exists in towns.
I think it's just the planning board. That's the only one that I've been involved in. Um, I don't think that we have anything to do with the school committee in that capacity. I'm, I may be wrong and that, you know, this may be coming to us or something, I don't know, but.
Well, if, if, if I can just add, and this, this is a little bit of a, a side side issue, I suppose, but I think two meetings ago, we had a conversation about, um, uh, a, a, either the president or a member of the town council being kind of a liaison to the school committee. And I did actually call, and I don't know whether I, if I'm repeating myself, I apologize, but I did call Pauline and have a conversation with her. She was actually not that I don't know, uh, uh, flipped out, if you will, that's not a very technical term, but, um, about having a town counselor, you know, sit in and be a liaison to the, to the school committee. But then she also told me that in about a week, I'm resigning my position on the school committee. So, but she, she was, she was going to like raise this issue with the school committee about having a town counselor as a liaison. Um, I I'll be happy to give her a call back now that she's made public her decision and see whether she ever had a chance to talk to the school committee about us, so. But I, I, I sort of a- agree with Tom a little bit. I, I mean, I think we just sort of throw this into the text, it would probably surprise a few people, so.
And I did, I, I thought we were taking the airport, the water, and the school, and we were banking them on the side, and everything else would be applicable to this until we met with those individuals who are kind of already operating on their own. So I don't know if the school committee is the example we should be looking at with this, because right now, aren't we sort of looking at them as not an automatic incorporation? Like the water and airport? Am I wrong? No.
I thought airport was elected. Who's from?
Huh? No, we appoint them.
Yeah.
I feel you do, I guess. Like airports, like, like airports.
I was, um, and and again, it doesn't have to be decided today, but I, we could, um, and again, it's not, it's actually not very, it's not uncommon, because school committees are so, are, are big and ha- are rel- are very high-profile committees, uh, for them to have their own, um, vacancy provision, um, from the remainder of the boards. So you could keep the same language, I guess, excising that the town, that the town council would participate, um, and then have it, have it, have it its own cover for the school committee, if if the committee is so inclined.
Well, how are they going to do it now? The school committee is going to appoint or elect a successor, right? It doesn't go to select board.
No, I, I believe, I believe the, 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 uh, the general laws require the boards to convene jointly and and vote the, the, uh, the vacancy.
So, so Mel, you think that the select board is going to have to, and the, the school committee will have to jointly elect the a new member of the school committee?
Correct.
But Tom, you don't, you don't think that's what's going to happen?
That's the first I've heard of it. It doesn't mean that, that that's not the case. I just that it hasn't come up before.
When I say general law, that's state, right?
Yes.
That overrides and.
Well, I, I, I just real, I, I'd looked it up while we're talking, and and you folks can look it up yourself, section eleven of chapter forty-one, which, uh, to me, it talks. Which, uh, to me, it talks about any vacancy in a board consisting of two or more members. Um, the remaining members shall get written notice thereof. Within one month, the select board who with the remaining member or members of such board shall, after a period. Fill a vacancy by roll call vote, so I, I think that's the way it's done now, so I, I think that the charter provision is consistent with that.
The good news, we're gonna meet again, and this process for school board now that it's out will play out, so we'll see.
It'll be interesting this season, you better ask, will be tomorrow, though.
I will. Okay, um, so I think we're, I think maybe where we are, Anthony, at least in terms of section four point one, is we're, we're generally in agreement. With an asterisk, asterisk, um. You know, for the school committee and, and perhaps one or two of the enterprise funds, we'll have to see how they play out.
Well, can I come on something Curtis said earlier? Curtis mentioned the water commissioners, and we'll have to find a home for the super commissioners, because they're right now.
That's, yeah.
Right now, the select board, uh. I, I would personally be in favor of having one of the sewer water commissioners, they do the.
They, they.
They're kind of tied together.
Totally integrated, as, like I say, every time you put a sewer line in, a water line goes in too, we're not gonna dig up the street twice.
My understanding is David Gray would be supportive of that, yes, I think, uh, I think Jill had a chat with him casually about this, so.
Yeah, I, I think.
He's got shit to be before as well, so.
Okay.
But we could certainly get Mark and David here.
Well, I. Good. Keep it on the, keep it on the screen.
All right. Anthony, you wanna, wanna plow ahead?
Yes, I'm just, I'm just taking a note on, on, on the, okay, great. So, um, nothing of real significance in the school committee portion. Um, there was some discussion around, and this is gonna come up again, uh, later on, around um, associate members. Um, and who would be appointing the associate members, um, so under your current, and this is gonna come in a couple of different sections, so we're just starting with the historic district commission. So we mapped it, um, the executive branch, the executive branch, the town manager, um, with, with confirmation by the town council. I think there was some discussion at the last meeting about, um. Well, a, about just appointing these, so again, based on our conversation today, it sounds like you'd be comfortable with the town manager with the confirmation of the council.
Yeah, yes. People are nodding.
Yep. I like two things, I like town manager pointing, and you're like council affirming or confirming, oh. All, any place, if there's a question, those two steps work the main.
So, um, going down here. This was another place we just highlighted for the. I mean, the town manager with the. Again, it seems like the comfort was comfortable with that, um, the only thing I would just sort of put.
Anthony, you're really chapping.
That, um, the planning board is one of those words, state. Hello? Oh, are, are you losing me? Can you hear me?
You're breaking up.
Oh, let me hold on. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, I was just gonna point out that under state law, um, the planning board, um, it, it's, the state law has sort of a split for planning boards, and I, I think. Or I'm pretty sure Nantucket basically just sort of followed state law, which says. If you have a, and if you're, if you are a city, or if you have like a council former government, then the planning board is up need. Uh, it says under the mayor, but it would be, you know, the manager, whomever. There are instances of communities that have council former government that still have an elected planning board, uh, but I just wanted to sort of make you aware of that sort of, um. Um, distinction under state law, uh, but again, this committee, uh, considered keeping it, uh, elected going forward. Um, so, un- unless anyone has any questions or concerns about it, I'm gonna move forward. I don't see anything.
Well.
So then there's the, uh, community preservation committee, again, we highlighted. Um, the, the reason for the highlight here is that the, um, board selectmen had it, had a direct appointment to the, um. Community preservation committee, um, and so we put it under the town council, or we, we put it under the town council now, though. The correct mapping would be to the town manager. Um. So I, I guess I put that question to the committee.
Manager. I would vote manager. Tom had a listen. I'm sorry, um, I'm sorry, Tom.
Sure, I, I am the select board rep on CPC right now, um, it is a wonderful committee. Um, I don't, I, I can kind of see both sides or both positions on this. Because if we're gonna make a lot of them manager with confirmation, then why would you make this one select board, but, um. It's, it's a, it's a very, it's a very nice committee to be on, so I'll just put it that, I'll just leave it at that. Because they do, we do great work, in my opinion.
I, I agree with you, we could, maybe we could get you on the committee, you know, in its new form top, so.
Okay, I'll lobby the manager, I'll be sure to be on all over that.
There you go, there you go.
Okay, so my notice town manager with the approval of the council.
Yep.
Okay. Um, and then, I guess we, uh, Mel, me and you can sort of go, go back and do some research with Pat on. Uh, putting a combined water sewer commission, um, elected in the charter, um.
Yeah, we can do, I think, whatever you want in a charter. Uh, I did notice that the sewer commission, there's a, there's a special act that created that, as, and so we, we want to just, you know, review that. But we understand the, uh, the interest to, to get a proposal about a combination, we'll work on that.
Um, now, so, so sort of that's it for section four, um, again, we're gonna come back to you with some, some sort of revised language, and honestly, based on this conversation about the. And I have my video off because of the, um, the bad connection, so apologies, um, but, um. We're probably gonna make some revisions to two and three, um, just based on the, where the committee has sort of landed on the appointment authority, so we'll point those out to you in, in future revisions. Um, I do have a draft, section five, if the committee wants to sort of, I guess briefly look at it, or do you want to go on to the other portions of your agenda?
Well, I'm gonna look at these. But, but.
Yeah, why, why don't?
Talk about without looking at it.
Yeah, Anthony, why don't you send us, send it along, so people can have a little more time to read them, uh. Unless, unless you think going through the administrative organization, you, you want to just point out some things that would be helpful when we do read it.
I can send it, we, we, you know, we weren't sure how long this discussion was gonna take, so we, we just, you know, we, we're moving, you know, with. Hope with most haste, sort of, so we've got one sort of drafted that we're doing, so I won't, I won't share yet until we finalize it, but. I guess the important things to note about the administrative organization, um, uh, for the committee to think about for next time is that we're just gonna talk about. Um, an important position for the appointment, which is gonna be the town, the town counselor, the, the lawyer for the community, so that's gonna be in that section. Uh, who appoints that person, and sort of what their duties and responsibilities are, so that's gonna be there. It's also gonna talk about the organization of municipal departments, um, uh, our current drafting has, um. Um, the manager creating, um, being able to reorganize departments, um, with the blessing of the town council. So those are sort of the major pieces that are gonna exist in that section, um, and then I will send that along for the next meeting.
No.
Mister, Mister Chair.
Oh, hang on a second, Tom, Curtis.
Um, as I recall, the, um, town council in Barnstable is a. Regular employee, Ruth Wild was the, I met with her, and she had an office, and she was on their payroll, and I think. Barnstable actually now has four people in the town council area, and I know we have that with the. K P O, we've got specialists, but I'm just curious if, um, if what Barnstable has as a staff. Person as a town council is something you should look at.
I'm shaking my head, up and down, yes.
Not sure, I'm not sure I like it, but I'm just raising the point that it exists.
All right, I don't. Uh, Tom, you, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, Mister Chair, just a, a minor aside through you to Mel, Mel, I just texted our town manager, and you are absolutely right. We, it is a joint appointment with the school board with the select board.
We all learned something new.
Thank you, Tom. Interesting. Um.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, do, uh, does the committee still want us to hold on the, uh, including the school co- uh, committee in that, um, vacancy language, or?
Yeah, I, I, I think the continuity is, is the, why, why reinvent something? If, if that's the way it, it has been, and there hasn't been an issue, uh, it sounds fine to me, then.
Yep, all right. You got that, Anthony?
I got it, yep.
All right, um. That was, you, you, you hit some highlights on section five, I think we had, um, did you want to talk a little bit about the preamble and article one at all, or is that? Um.
Um.
Or is that not?
Not, not really much of a discussion, I would say the preamble is, uh, a place where, uh, some communities, uh, sort of. Articulate their values, um, it doesn't have sort of direct operational, um, effect, um, but it, it is, you know, we sort of put in. Like a standard one, um, but you, you know, the committee can feel free to tinker around with it, um, the article one is really sort of your. Um, I, I don't see much variation in this from town, from various places, but I mean, i- if the committee has thoughts or things that they'd want to change, that this is really sort of the. Plumbing of, I wouldn't say the town, but the, how the, the charter connects with town operations, so, um. Sort of that's what's in the, the, it's, you know, short title and definitions, um, so unless there are questions, we don't have. Alan, was there anything you want to point out about the, about either of these sections, Mel?
Um. I didn't have anything in particular, I just didn't know if you wanted to review it, so. All right, well then, why don't we, um. Why don't we move on to the last item on the, um, on, on the discussion, which was to talk a little bit about. Maybe worth a little bit about the public forum, um, and getting, um, um. Really putting this, all this information in, in front of the public, in front of voters, um, I did, uh, chat with Maureen, and then with. Robin, Robin, thank you. With Robin Dugan, and, um, I guess I was thinking that to have a, um, public hearing, we need a space bigger than this, this room.
No, let's do the. Yeah, yeah.
So, um, and the community room, uh, she gave me a, uh, was a share, yes. Uh, gave me a, uh, one, two, three, about six or seven dates, uh, in the end of, in the end of September and the beginning of October. Um, a couple of them. Well, I, 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 I basically, um, went through the calendar and selected, uh, two Thursday evenings. Uh, sort of five thirty start times, uh, either September twenty-ninth or October tenth. Or, um, I'm curious what the committee thinks about actually having a public forum on a Saturday, there were a couple of Saturdays that were. That were open and, uh, the, I'm sorry, it was September twenty-sixth and October tenth, and then the Saturday, September twenty-eighth. Or October fifth, were both Saturdays where the community room was available.
Four, I cannot, not do the twenty-sixth.
Let's do two in the evening and two on Saturdays, and I'm, I mean, I'm willing to put the time in.
Also, the technical projects going on, I'll ask.
Which one is on that, which of the, the September twenty-eighth or the?
Starts on that twenty-sixth, it goes to twenty-ninth.
Well, that's the Nantucket project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let, let me then, then, then let's back up, and I'll tell you all, let's. The dates that, that Robin gave me, and I don't know what days of the week these are, were September twenty-third, September twenty-sixth. September twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth. And then October fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, tenth, and eleventh. And I think what I, I'm, I'm not looking at a calendar, maybe some of you are, but, um, I, I tried to avoid Monday, any Mondays, I thought Mondays were not a particularly great day to. Try to get a group together.
That's the twenty-third, thirty is.
Yeah, but you can stay on the eleven, so it's like three days.
Yeah. Um, and I, I also thought Fridays would probably.
I like Thursdays.
I, I, I just thought Thursdays was sort of a middle of the week, and then I thought the Saturdays were, were an interesting opportunity since.
Well, you, like the, um, non-resident taxpayers meet on Saturday morning and other groups do. Again, I, I do two and two, personally, I'm willing to step up, be around for two.
What do people think, two, four? I mean, I would, to be honest, I was thinking one, and then another one, maybe another month, but. Um, okay, I, I, I. Well, I'm, I'm.
You should stay away from that last weekend, or in September, because.
Oh, yeah, that, that last week, September won't work with the Nantucket's project.
So how are people on either Saturday, well, have Saturday, October fifth, and I think it's Thursday, October tenth, either of those days. Any, any of those both work for me, that's September twenty-eighth, those two days. Yeah, okay. Um, then I think we ought to, um. Take some time at our next meeting, which is the eighteenth. And, you know, schedule a little time to talk about what's, what's the message, how do we want to format the meeting? How do we want to pay, how do we public, publicize it? I think we need to.
Man, I almost think that the whole meeting could be spent towards. Putting that presentation together.
And we should run a couple of display ads in the, uh, current, or, or, it looks like the. Electronic people know and run an ad in the Incano.
Well, I think doing anything in I, I, in the I N M would require some money, and I'm not sure, I'll, I'll mention it to Libby, but I don't know whether.
Well, the town has a deal with the I N M for.
Well, I, I'll mention it to Libby and see what she says.
I would say. I think also, I mean, there's definitely availability for it to be put out on, like, top social media platforms and those things, and we get a lot of good response for. Facebook and Instagram and.
Yeah, yeah.
That's for free, so, that will free the plan for town staff, I'll get that together, but I think. That's randomly.
Well, I was saying the print, and to balance it so that we don't look like we're ignoring them, because we want them to cover us and support us and.
Yeah.
Of course, so.
I think it should be on the printer.
And see if Libby can find us a couple of books.
All right. Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that my fellow committee members saw the results of the town meeting survey that was in the select board packet. And that was presented to us at our last meeting two weeks ago, that is informative of, of, of a few things and points that we've been discussing in general. Uh, happy to send it along if, no, if anybody hasn't seen it.
I, I would love it, Tom, if you could, um.
Afford it to Joe.
I would love it if you could, um, summarize from your perspective what stands out for you in that, in the results.
Uh, it was two weeks ago, so I don't have it fresh in my head, but I'm more than happy to discuss it at our next meeting.
It did speak to very low involvement, though, I read the report and the numbers were pretty scary.
I, I remember just being reasonably supportive of the idea of a change, but I don't, I don't really remember all this, I'm like, Tom, I, I went through it. Three or four weeks ago, so, all right, it's on, if you would send it around to everybody, that would be, or send it to me, and I'll distribute it, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just worth, a- as, to, you know, put in the, the bulk of our thoughts, that's all, we'll do.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Um. I don't have anything else, any other, anything else on, anyone's fine, Anthony or Mel, anything, um.
Oh, what's our next agenda going to be looking like?
Well, I think our next agenda, I will report back on my conversation with Libby, and I think we should spend some time on, um. Composing and outlining a message and, um.
Well, I'm wondering, you know, now, anything to bring to us for next, next one, in particular. We'll correct the, uh, all the changes, or we'll make all the, the changes to the charter based on the conversation this evening in, uh. Article four, for sure. And then I will also provide you with the article five, uh, draft.
Do you guys have any, um, I don't know, suggestions, uh, sample materials? You know, what, what type of, uh, either presentation materials or handouts that other towns have used for their public forums?
Yes, we'll send some stuff along.
Right.
And I did just wanna, to highlight for the committee, and I, I'm, I know that we've maybe said this in our Monday meetings a few times, but, um. I go to the, to the webs, the, the committee's website, sort of periodically, um. It may behoove the committee to make some sort of avenue for the members of the public to email you, if they can't go to the meeting, some way to communicate. It may behoove the committee to make some sort of avenue for the members of public to email you, if they can't go to the meeting, some way to communicate their thoughts. Um, beyond, uh, physically attending a meeting.
Um, we, we need, we need to, you know, get the email address up, so, yeah, we just gotta. Okay. All right, um, if there are no other comments or items on the agenda, I think we can, can I have asked for a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
All right, Caroline. So, Jeff. Rachel.
Ayes.
Tom.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Curtis. Joe, I, hi Donna, hi Donna. Thanks, everybody. Thank you both for coming.